So hello everyone, thank you so much for coming to our Cupertino City Council Candidates Climate Forum. Yeah, as you just heard, the webinar has started recording. I would like to first introduce the members of the Cupertino Youth Climate Action Team who will be moderating this forum today. My name is Sarah Liu, I am a junior at Montevista.
Hello everyone, I am Elise Chu and I'm also a junior at Montevista.
Hi, I'm Maria Narang, I'm a senior at Cupertino High School.
Hello everyone, my name is Shinpei and I'm a junior attending Cupertino High School.
Hi, I'm Clarabel Wang, a sophomore at Cupertino High School.
Hi, I'm Darren Chu, I'm a senior at Montevista High School.
Hi, I'm Pravam Arfathia, I'm a sophomore at Cupertino High School.
Hello, I'm Erin and I'm a junior at Cupertino High School.
Hi, my name is Grace Cho and I'm a sophomore at Cupertino High School.
So just to give a really brief intro, although we obviously can't vote yet, our team still believes in the importance of taking on an active stance on addressing climate issues in our city. That's why we're really thrilled to have seven city council candidates here with us today to discuss their perspectives on climate change. We have randomized the speaker order and we'll be starting the first question with Mr. Bono, followed by Ms. Chow, then Ms. Mohan, Mr. Tadachary, Ms. Shima, Mr. Fuwen, and last but not least, Mr. Scharf. After every question, the first speaker will speak last for the next question and the second speaker will speak first. Again, we will be starting off the first question with Mr. Bono and ending with Mr. Scharf. For your first question, please give a one-minute introduction explaining why you are running for city council. Mr. Bono, please unmute.
Perfect, can you hear me now?
Yes, feel free to start.
My name is Claude Yubono, I'm running for city council. And thank you so much for hosting this event, I'm actually thrilled to be part of this conversation with the next generations of our community and happy to discuss all the important topics tonight with you all. Climate change is a challenge of our times and for every small, medium, and large cities. So we have a responsibility to educate ourselves and hold that responsibility and make sure future generations are prepared to take on the task to respond to climate change. I have a unique skill set as a businessman and chamber of commerce president. I've been involved with nonprofits and as a business leader and general manager of our Cupertino hotel, I'm running because we need answers and actions, but nothing can be done if we don't fix our transportation and our housing. And obviously enough of this means anything if we don't talk about climate change now, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bono. Next up is Ms. Chow, Ms. Chow, please unmute.
Hi, hello everyone. This is Liang Chow, current Vice Mayor of Cupertino. I have lived in Cupertino for 24 years with my two kids and husband. I love this community, thus in addition to working full-time at a startup now, I devote my time to listen to residents' concerns and look at how to create a better community. I was elected to the Cupertino Union School Board in 2016 and then to the council in 2018. We have accomplished many things despite the pandemic and the staffing challenges facing every city. We adopted the Climate Action Plan 2.0, we adopted the REACH Code 2.0 for electrification, and we annexed the parks and built a community garden. I would like to see more native garden included in our parks and more native programs that I would like to involve youth in all this effort, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chow. Next up, we have Ms. Mohan, Ms. Mohan, please unmute.
Good evening, my name is Sheila Mohan and I am running for city council in November 2022. I'm a longtime resident of Cupertino and I have lived in this city for more than 30 years. I'm also, in my professional career, I have held senior management positions in local government. I was a senior finance manager with the County of Santa Clara and Director of Administrative Services in Union City. I have many years of experience managing budgets, developing budgets, and keeping on track of fiscal problems in the county as well as in the city. I have been involved in many volunteer activities in the city. I have served as a finance commissioner, a library commissioner, and I'm now a volunteer driver for West Valley Community Services Ride Program. I feel I'm qualified, on all accounts, to be the next city candidate.
Thank you, Ms. Mohan. Next up, we have Mr. Tadachary, Mr. Tadachary, please unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm a 29-year resident of Cupertino and I am currently the Vice Chair of the Housing Commission. I have been involved in community advocacy work for quite some time, about eight years. I understand gender ban and state mandates as well as the environmental issues. And I'm a more policy-driven person. The reason I'm running is essentially because I think city needs transparency, accountability, and responsible government. It also needs, of course, reacting to the climate change issues. It needs sustainable development and better transportation solutions. And it also needs a resident-friendly representation on the council. And I would like to be the voice of the community on the council. And if you work for me, you are working for residents and I'll make sure that your voice is heard, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tadachary. Next up, we will have Ms. Shima, Ms. Shima, please unmute.
Hi, I'm running for Cupertino City Council because I want to bring many changes to this city. I have lived in this city for 15 years, I raised two children, one is 22 and the other is 18. I have lived all my time here in apartment. I have seen apartment residents throwing all the waste, including e-waste and hazardous waste and balcony wastes, all in one trash bin. I think that must change. E-wastes are not safe, buried or burned. They must be separated from waste. Also, when those things are in landfill and when it rains and when it gets wet, it produces toxic elements which is bad for the environment.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Shima. Okay. Next, okay, thank you, Ms. Shima. Mr. Fuwen will be next, Mr. Fuwen, please unmute.
Hi, my name is JR Fuwen, I'm an attorney by training in trade and I'm a longtime community advocate here in Cupertino. I'm also a third-generation resident of this city who grew up in this community. I'm running frankly to ensure that that sort of story continues to be possible, growing up here and building a life here. And to me, that means that we need to focus on building housing that is affordable to those who want and need to live in this city. And in order to fulfill that promise to the next generation, it also means that we have to ensure that we build sustainably and in a way that reduces vehicle miles traveled and other sources of greenhouse gas emissions. I'm committed to a better climate future for Cupertino, which is why I'm endorsed by such climate champions as the League of Conservation Voters, Senator Dave Cortese, former Senator Jim Bell, and the Chair of our very own Sustainability Commission, Vignesh Swaminathan, who is probably better known as Mr. Barricade. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fuwen. And last but not least, we will be having Mr. Scharf, Mr. Scharf, please unmute.
Okay, thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, so I have been mayor for two years and now I'm Chair of the Planning Commission. Sustainability has always been a big issue for me, including reducing vehicle traffic. I was the driving force behind protected bike lanes. I was mayor when Cupertino received the Platinum Award for Sustainability from the state, the only city in the state that year that received it. So because we've done so well in sustainability, it's kind of hard with a lot more we can do, but I'm very proud of our accomplishments so far. And I would like to see more transparency in government and have everyone be accountable and be responsive to residents, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scharf, and thank you to everyone for their introductions. Now, all the candidates will have 1 minute and 30 seconds to answer each of the following questions centered around climate change. As a reminder, we will be rotating speaker order, so the speaker who just went first will now be going last and the speaker who went second will be going first. Clarabel will be asking the first question.
So the first question is, what do you regard as the major environmental and conservation issues facing Cupertino? Talk about how you intend to address these. You will have a minute and 30 seconds and we will start with Ms. Chow and continue in the same order as last time, ending with Mr. Bono. Ms. Chow, please unmute.
Hi, so the major environmental issue we face is Lehigh Cement. The council since 2019 have retained the top environmental forum, Shudma Hali, to write very strong letter to look into their violation record, working with some active Cupertino residents. We have been able to write very strong letters to oppose their pollution. As a result, the county and the Lehigh are working on a potential agreement to close the Lehigh Summit. Another environmental issue is actually the cleaning up of the Walco site. Because it was streamlined through state law, there was no environmental review of the project. It was found out later there were a lot of pollution underground. They need to come up with a plan to clean them up so that the workers, the construction workers and the residents who live there won't be impacted, but they have not finished the plan. As a result, the project cannot move forward. I would like to see more native plants to be planted in Cupertino. And besides that, other challenges we are already moving forward with the Climate Action Plan and the REACH Code. I think we are in a good place, we just need to implement all the great plans we've made, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chow. Our next speaker will be Ms. Mohan, Ms. Mohan, please unmute.
Can you repeat the question?
Clarabel?
Can you repeat the question, Sarah?
Yes, the question is, what do you regard as the major environmental and conservation issues facing Cupertino? Talk about how you intend to address these and you have 1 minute and 30 seconds.
Okay, the major environmental issues facing Cupertino is not restricted to Cupertino alone. In fact, I'd like to address the major environmental and conservation issues facing Cupertino and the Bay Area as a whole. So those issues would be climate warming, of course, exposure to dirty air, pollution from traffic, current drought, and the perennial threat of earthquakes. What would I do? Is that the second part of the question?
Yes, talk about how you intend to address these.
I intend to address these with a perspective that it is our responsibility to leave the planet healthy and safe for generations like yours and for all these environmental and conservation issues to be mitigated. I would do what is essentially the right thing to do. We must preserve open spaces, we must develop sustainable communities, we must achieve energy efficiency and water conservation, we should invest in alternative energy sources and technologies. As a city council member, I will continue and strengthen where possible the city's Climate Action Plan, which as you know is designed to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and reduce harmful consequences of climate change.
Great, thank you, Ms. Mohan. Our next speaker will be Mr. Tadachary. Mr. Tadachary, please unmute.
Yeah, actually, we do have major climate change and environmental issues. Of course, to begin with, it's the issue of air quality for now. It's because of the Lehigh and other fires and kinds of things that have recently occurred. Every time there's a fire, the visibility really comes down, the air quality really goes down. So the other one is, of course, climate change, this is a long-term thing on which we have already implemented CAP 2.0 and I will go through that in detail a little later. The third thing is the water issue, you know, we are in intense drought at this point and it's what they say, once-in-a-lifetime kind of a drought. So I think in these three areas, our efforts are going to be different. Air quality management is something where, you know, we all can do a concerted effort together. And I think one of the things that I would think that we can help both air quality as well as climate change is that if we can come up with better solutions, transportation solutions, that would be one thing. The other is we have to be very careful about sustainable development, certain kind of development generate a lot more heat and stuff like that, so that absorption, heat absorption, heat cooling is different for them and also the electricity consumption. And in terms of our ability to manage our water resources properly, I think we definitely need a master plan almost at the state level.
Thank you, Mr. Tadachary. Our next speaker will be Ms. Shima, Ms. Shima, please unmute.
Hi, the biggest conservation issues we are facing in Cupertino is naturally water. We don't have water, but there's nothing we can do about it because we are in climate change. We are facing the environmental crisis since a long time ago. What I'd like to do, well, first of what I can do is having businesses, restaurants that manages vegetables such as vegetables and fruits. They can produce methane, which is a greenhouse gas which is eight times to 20 times more potent than CO2 fossil fuel. So we could reduce the production of methane gas by separating vegetable, fruit, vegetable waste, fruit wastes, eggshells, milk cartons, used paper plates, paper cups and such from the rest of the waste. And after all the restaurants and cafes in Cupertino do that practice, we could implement that for the entire resident of Cupertino. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Shima. Our next speaker will be Mr. Fuwen, Mr. Fuwen, please unmute.
So I think our biggest conservation and climate challenges are reducing greenhouse gas emissions and reducing our water use. I like to let my thinking be guided by data and facts. Per UC Berkeley's Cool Climate Project, our best opportunities for reducing greenhouse gas emissions lie in reducing vehicle miles traveled through the construction of infill housing, building electrification both through commercial use and heating electrification. And I think our best way to do that and also to reduce water use because we know that multifamily housing, new multifamily housing specifically, is at least twice as water efficient on a per capita basis, is that we leverage the housing element update process that we're already engaged in to promote more mixed-use transit-oriented development so that people get to live closer to where they live and work and play and so that we redevelop old inefficient buildings under our new REACH Codes. Our CAP 2.0 is a great next step, but one of the things that it leaves open for us as a new opportunity is to reduce vehicle mile travel impacts that we create by the fact that there are too many people who cannot live in Cupertino, who work in Cupertino and they're consigned to extraordinarily long commutes because of the cost of housing here. We don't account for that in the way that we analyze our climate impacts, we should change that. And by virtue of building more affordable housing in Cupertino closer to jobs, we can allow people who have to commute from Stockton to live in Cupertino instead, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fuwen. Our next speaker is going to be Mr. Scharf, Mr. Scharf, please unmute.
Thank you. So I have two things that I want to talk about. One is the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA. SEQA has been under relentless attack by development interests. There's new laws that exempt some developments from requiring EIR. One law signed in 2022 this month allows housing to be built on top of toxic waste as long as the site is 20 acres or less in size. The SB 35 law allows development on top of Native American burial grounds, shell grounds. Berkeley lost a lawsuit trying to stop such a project. SEQA, it does cause projects to take longer to be approved and built, absolutely, but the environment is worth it. And Cupertino, we need to partner with other cities to protect SEQA. The other major issue, I would say, is water. And actually, we can do a lot about it. Now, you can't easily manufacture water like you can electricity with solar power and desalinization is very costly. But one thing we can do, we can stop using potable water where it isn't necessary. Landscaping and water for toilet flushing are the big opportunities for the use of gray water. For new housing, the plumbing should be put in as it's built, as should be underground cisterns to store the gray water. We can extend the Purple Pipe from the Apple Campus up to Stevens Creek Boulevard and then west to Blackberry Farm Golf Course, Memorial Park, Deans College.
Thank you, Mr. Scharf.
Thank you.
Time is up. Okay, our last speaker for this question is Mr. Bono, Mr. Bono, please unmute.
Done, thank you. To be honest with you, the major environment issue first and foremost is to start with us. It starts with educating ourselves, keep educating our residents, keep incentivize and create policies that do make sense. Create long-term climate leadership school that can become a zero landfill environment. And it starts with us, really, and for our love for the future. But we need to continue educate ourselves, like I said, incentivize people to keep them engaged, invest in infrastructures that actually make sense so that we use sustainable materials when we're building and remain ahead as a city and the state and leader in the world so that we can continue to be on track with this CAP 2.0, which is fantastic. But we need leadership and then keep the goals for 2035, net zero, 2050. All of that is a big deal because all our police cars and fire trucks will be electric. And I'm glad that our Secretary of State Pete Buttigieg created now a federal law that will create EV stations everywhere. So we need to do more for our future, I mean, we need to create school programs and create new leaders that will bring ideas so that we can keep ourselves ahead of the trend, keep everybody informed, but that's our challenge, keep everybody understanding the new normal, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bono, and thank you everyone for this first question. For our second question, I will be handing it off to Darren.
Yeah, cool, so we consider your past record as the best indicator of your future action for the environment. So what are some past efforts to protect natural resources and the environment that you would like to highlight? Once again, you'll be having 1 minute 30 seconds for each answer and we'll start with Sheila Mohan, Ms. Mohan, please unmute.
Okay, again, could you repeat the question, please?
Sure, so we can, okay, I'll repeat the question. What have you done in the past to protect natural resources and the environment that you would like to highlight?
Let me talk about what I did in my professional career. In my, as a senior executive with the County of Santa Clara and later with Union City, I advocated for open spaces for employees to gather. I reduced air conditioning where feasible. I encouraged use of biodegradable food containers in the employee cafeteria and discouraged the use of single-use plastic water bottles. In my personal life, I try and practice these as well. I drive a hydrogen car, which is an electric car fueled by hydrogen, which is a clean energy. And I'm actively involved in the West Valley Community Services, which also promotes sustainable growth in several different areas of our lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mohan. And next up, we will have Mr. Tadachary, Mr. Tadachary, please unmute.
Yeah, hello. In terms of my personal life, which is where I would like to start, is that we have been very careful in terms of electricity usage. We have also been very careful in terms of our vehicle miles traveled. We do have three vehicles, out of which one is with our daughter who's at the university. And we have two vehicles and we kind of manage it very well. And pandemic helped a little bit because we didn't have to drive around that much. And we are very careful about VMTs. The water usage is also something we monitor a lot. And we have tried to move away from the usage of gas, but it's an ongoing effort, it's not completed. So back in terms of what I have done in terms of community efforts, I have advocated for sustainable and sensible growth. And the reason I said for that is because we need the overall way to handle every issue that comes with unbalanced growth. So I think we first of all need a better transportation solutions, both for the city itself and also for the region. And that's where I have been spending a lot of time over the last eight years. And I think we need a balance between the growth as well as transportation solutions, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tadachary. Our next speaker will be Ms. Shima, Ms. Shima, please unmute.
Hi, my past achievement is that about 13 years ago, I founded a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization for humanitarian, environmental, and homelessness rescue missions. I worked in the environmental sector to promote recycling cooking oil as a hazardous waste and light bulbs as hazardous waste and batteries as hazardous waste. Because at that time, in the website of the city of Cupertino, light bulbs, batteries, cooking oil were not considered as hazardous wastes. So I worked to promote that they were. And also, at that time, I was advocating the removal of CFCs, chlorofluorocarbons in AC equipment, like air conditioners, because those, if they are not properly disposed of, they destroy ozone layer. At that time, people were not really aware of those. But today, I see this information clearly in the EPA's website. So I think in time, my work gave fruit, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shima. Our next speaker will be Mr. Fuwen, Mr. Fuwen, please unmute.
So first and foremost, I founded Cupertino For All, which is a nonprofit focused on how we use land in Cupertino in order to promote affordability, sustainability, and inclusion. We are actively engaged and I am as its Policy Director in the Housing Element Update Process so that we can further each one of those goals. I've also been a longtime advocate for bike pit infrastructure in the city. I got top marks from Walk-Bike Cupertino, which has been engaged in every major advocacy effort in Cupertino for bike pedestrian infrastructure here for the last several years. It's important that we make active transportation a reality in Cupertino and we have to do it through policy advocacy and policy reform. I also supported the CAP 2.0 and participated in its development when it was in the public comment period. I pressed for the inclusion of land use reform to ensure that we have a meaning. I pressed for the inclusion of land use reform to ensure that we have a meaningful reduction in our greenhouse gas emissions. So like I said earlier, that we don't have as many people who are having to make mega commutes in order to get to Cupertino. And we aren't simply externalizing our greenhouse gas emissions onto other communities. I've supported the city's environmental legislation, including our posture toward LEH high cement, our dark sky ordinance, our single-use plastics ordinance. I've advocated for the Stevens Creek Boulevard Vision Study to improve our transit access and frequency alongside Santa Clara and San Jose. And I've advocated for a bus-only lane on State Route 85. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fruein. Our next speaker will be Mr. Scharf. Mr. Scharf, please unmute.
Unmuted. Thank you. So as a city council member, I voted for the REACH code, which included the elimination of natural gas and new construction. I advocated for the rebuilding of the community gardens at McClellan Ranch. I advocated for single-use plastic legislation. I was the prime advocate for protected bicycle lanes along McClellan and Bub, as well as advocating for two trails, the Regnar Creek Trail and the Linda Vista Trail. I've been a Sierra Club member for 42 years. I've led hundreds of trips for members out into the wilderness. In 2020, I was endorsed by the Sierra Club when I created a chapter. Unfortunately, in 2022, they abandoned their endorsement process due to some corruption in that process, so they didn't do any endorsements this year. In my personal life, we have solar on the roof, a plug-in hybrid car, a solar-powered clothes dryer, also known as a clothesline. We use gray water for landscaping when possible. And this thing I'm doing now, I'm advocating for a research and fact-based approach to sustainable housing. There's a big misconception out there that cramming as many people as possible into smaller spaces results in lower GHGs. And that is demonstrably untrue. It also creates heat islands, which we're trying to avoid. And I also want to point out, if you can see my background, you can see all of this at my website, tinyurl.com/climatecoop. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scharf. Our next speaker will be Mr. Bono. Mr. Bono, please unmute.
I am going to actually answer your question, which is, we consider your past record as the best indicator of your future action for the environment. And what I do is a lot of composting, which is great for my plants. I installed purifiers, water purifier, fountains in my hotels. Actually, it helps to remove water borrows from our landfills. I'm reducing my carbon footprint by walking to work. I'm lucky to work not that far, but I also have another location in Sunnyvale for which I do. And I do sometimes bike as well. I hang my clothes, so that is, I don't use, I use the natural air system, if you will. And I do walk even every day over a mile to go to the gym. And I use proper bins for my waste. But I also do ride share with my colleagues. And so that, to respond to your question, what we consider current and past record on what we do for future actions. And this is why, it's a way of life. This is what I do every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bono. And last but not least, our speaker for this question will be Ms. Chow. Ms. Chow, please unmute.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Mr. Fruein for mentioning a lot of the accomplishments the council has led and advocated that he merely commented on. And we led, I led the Bird Safe and Dark Sky Ordinance. As a result, now our library expansion project has the Bird Safe glass. They look wonderful. You should check it out. And then I have advocated for single-use plastic because in Taiwan, even 10 years ago, we already used paper product for a lot of takeouts. And every day I carry reusable cup and reusable utensils with me so that I can personally reduce plastic use every day. And our family, my kids have been biking to school since middle school and we carpool for the other kid who attend a further away school. And now our family has only one car. I find that it encouraged us to carpool with friends, scooter, bike, or take transit. And it's really, it's a way of life. And that we enjoy it. And I'd like to thank, oh, I think we have done really amazing, we have amazing sustainability department and sustainability commission. I would like to continue this great work. And so that we need to advocate more to our residents so they are aware of single-use plastic and they can join us to reduce plastic waste. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chow. And thank you, everyone, for your answers to the second question. Now for our third question, I will be handing it off to Perva.
Thanks. Here's my question for our candidates. Do you feel that the recently approved Climate Action Plan 2.0 is adequate to address climate change? How would you ensure implementation proceeds well? You have 1 minute and 30 seconds each. We will start with Mr. Tadachari. Mr. Tadachari, please unmute.
Very good question. Actually, if you look at it, you know, there are a number of elements to the CAP 2.0. They include outdoor transportation, building energy, and several others. So these, the outdoor transportation, as well as the building energy, has contributed to two big parts, big parts of the DHT, which is the greenhouse gas. So we need, that's the reason I keep going back and saying that we need to include our transportation solutions. And that is the only mechanism which is available to bring about a significant reduction in terms of what we are trying to do. CAP 2.0 requires a lot of, I would think it will require a lot more incentives, both from the state as well as the federal government. Because not everybody can easily move towards electrification. It's not an easy proposition. It involves money because that's, I know, that's a given. And the other thing which I would like to say is that CAP 2.0, we have done an excellent job because we are aligned with the state objectives. So as long as we monitor progress, I think we'll be doing pretty well. And how do you proceed? Yeah, I think that's pretty much it. I mean, I think I have highlighted the most important things where we can set directions and policy. There are a lot of other details, you know, we can go through. I mean, each of them requires a certain amount of investment of, you know, resources, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Tadachari. Our next speaker will be Ms. Shima. Ms. Shima, please unmute.
I actually don't know what the Climate Action Plan 2 indicates. Is it about like the reduction of carbon dioxide, fossil fuel, using vehicle by 2035, that kind of thing? I think that if that is that, I think that alone is not really going to make a huge impact the next 50 years, but after that it will. But before that, within 50 years, we have to take more drastic measures such as cutting down the amount of fuels burnt at PG&E plant, for example. Phasing out that amount is more important than phasing out the amount of gas emissions from vehicles. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shima. Our next speaker will be Mr. Fruein. Mr. Fruein, please unmute.
So I think CAP 2.0 is great. I think implementing it is going to make a huge impact. I do however think that we need to go further for the reasons I mentioned in my last answer. The methodology that was used in CAP 2.0 didn't look at greenhouse gas emission impacts that we create from people having to engage in lengthy commutes to get to Cupertino in order to access all of the opportunities that we create here. So I think that what we need to do in order to get to CAP 3.0 is to reexamine that particular piece of the puzzle. The way that we get to addressing that is fortunately the same as the way that we deal with implementation of CAP 2.0. In particular, we need to look at how we address redevelopment of older buildings, older sites, so that we can ensure that our REACH code matters. It's really hard on a legal basis to get old buildings to conform to new standards. One of the best ways to do that is through redevelopment. So if you tear down an old building and replace it with a new one, it must conform to new building codes. For other older buildings, especially single-family homes where maybe someone is living on a fixed income, I think we need to create a subsidy program so that people can actually electrify in a meaningful way and with some degree of certainty. And then finally, I think we also have to reduce our permitting times for electrification. You know, we have to staff up the planning and permitting department. We're already short-staffed there. We need to make sure it's faster. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Fruein. Our next speaker will be Mr. Scharf. Mr. Scharf, please unmute.
Thank you. So CAP 2.0 is a good start. It addresses a lot of what the city can do. On a larger scale, we need to lobby the state legislature and federal government for funding to achieve goals like the elimination of natural gas in existing homes. In Ithaca, New York, they're doing exactly this. They're providing subsidies to homeowners to install increased electrical capacity and install electric appliances in place of gas appliances. Yeah, it costs about $50,000 per home to do this kind of thing. So clearly, the city isn't going to have the money to pay for it. We are going to have to move to getting that money from the federal government. We also really need to look at the changing face of transportation and urban intensity. Old thinking was that we cram everyone into a small space, it'll reduce GHGs because there's no need for long commutes in gasoline-powered vehicles. But a lot's changed, including recently. First is the move to electric vehicles, especially when recharged with wind, solar, or hydro. Second is the rise in remote working, which eliminates the need for a lot of commuting. Third is the rise in corporate transportation that eliminates the need for single occupancy vehicle transit. We really have to get over the idea that we can somehow convince people to use inconvenient, slow transit. It's not a good approach. I love, I'm out of time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scharf. Our next speaker will be Mr. Bono. Mr. Bono, please unmute.
Thank you. Cupertino Climate Action Plan 2.0 released this year. I actually set up an ambition, but ambitious but actionable goals to allow us all to take leadership by reducing our greenhouse gas emission and achieving all the goals. Like reaching carbon neutrality by 2050, so establishing a zero-waste community-wide target. So just to name a few. And providing a blueprint for process for us to achieve these goals with equity, resiliency, flexibility, and urgency in mind. And that's what it is, is that's the urgency that we're finally establishing to achieve carbon neutrality for all city-owned facilities and operations because it puts into action a plan that recognizing that climate change is here. So, and again, I think it's great to have a 2.01. I think we're also ahead as a city and the state. But we do need to move forward also with transportation as well because it's a regional issue. It's not a Cupertino issue alone. So we need to make sure we have grants. We need to move forward with everything in providing green technology. Like I said earlier, happy that Badijich actually set up some type of federal EV charging system because as they say, if you build it, they'll come. So we need to remain focused and ahead, and I think we're doing pretty good. We just need to keep steady.
Thank you, Mr. Bono. Our next speaker will be Ms. Chow. Ms. Chow, please unmute.
Thank you. When the council adopted the Planet Action, Climate Action 2.0, we were thinking, as an engineer, my first question was, is the goal realistic? So the staff went to study and then proposed the three levels of goals. And they eventually went adopt the most aggressive goal. Initially, I thought, when we set a goal, we have to try and achieve that. But that goal we set right now actually is an aspirational goal. It's higher than we could possibly get, but then we want to try to get it. But to implement that, we do need an annual review. The city tend to make a plan and then doesn't review it annually on what initiatives we can take. And I'd like to point out that the governor already set a plan to move to 100% electric vehicle by 2035. So greenhouse emission from commuting is not going to be an issue very soon. And then the governor already adopted a requirement for all offices to, all companies to recycle their organic waste in 2016. These are all actions that are already taken, and then we are implementing those state policies. And as I said, the same time, Cupertino has adopted VR shuttle so that we use electric shuttle to move people around. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Our final speaker for this question will be Ms. Mohan. Ms. Mohan, please unmute.
So the question was, is the current Climate Action Plan 2.0 adequate? Correct me if I wrong, that was the question, right? Is it?
Yes.
Okay. So my response to that is, yes, it is adequate in the sense that it is a comprehensive document. It focuses on important things. It focuses on the need to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. It recognizes that we have problems and that we are experiencing significant impacts of climate change. You know, like changing weather patterns, extreme weather events. And it has about 20 different ways in which these problems can be combated. So to your answer, is it adequate? I would say it is adequate as a starting point and like any other partfully-produced documents. This is something, it's a work in progress. It will have to be looked at periodically. And it will have to be adapted where necessary. But for now, it's a good starting point and addresses all the key elements of climate change. In terms of how I would, I think you said monitor the projects. Is that what it goes?
Yeah. So your time is up, but thank you for your comment. And thank you, everyone, for answering for this third question. For the fourth question, I will pass it off to Erin.
Thank you. Our next question for our candidates is, how do you plan on making transit or transportation more reliable and sustainable? Again, each speaker will have 1 minute and 30 seconds. And for this question, we will start with Ms. Shima. Ms. Shima, you may unmute.
How to make our transit more sustainable? Certainly, converting into a smaller-sized buses instead of the current big buses and making it electric bus is environmentally friendly. Transportation, bike racks, we need parking lot for bikes, bicycles. And in this hot climate, bicycle tires get flat and soft, so they need roof. I will put roof, solar panel roof over bike racks so that we can create clean energy. And also, there will be more bikers in our city. And what else? There should be a lot. But when we have electric cars. Okay, I'll save the answer for the rest. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shima. Our next speaker is Mr. Fruein. Mr. Fruein, please unmute. Thank you, Ms. Shima. Our next speaker is Mr. Fruein. Mr. Fruein, please unmute.
The first thing we need to do is to fund more buses in order to increase their frequency. They are used, they will be used more frequently if they actually come in a reliable fashion, but it does take money to do that. We have to look at transit as a public good that is funded for the use of us all, especially those who have the least means. In order to effectuate that in this city and regionally, I think that means that we rely on bus rapid transit that involves signal prioritization so that buses can more easily transit the corridors that they're on and dedicated lanes for their purpose. We can also help fund a lot of this through transportation demand management programs that key to new redevelopment. So as we build out the housing element that we are planning for right now, ensuring that we have a good TDM program in place will allow us to fund some of these, these measures. We also need to make sure that we're able to resolve the final mile program, I'm sorry, final mile problem with things like scooters and e-bike share so that, you know, if you're trying to get to things like the bus or count train or other means of, of transportation that you can do so conveniently at, at any point along your journey. And then finally, I think we definitely need to ensure that we create seamless transit regionally. Right now, if you're going to try to get to, say, a place like SFO on transit, you're going to have to go through three or four different agencies and none of your tickets are through. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fruein. For our next speaker, we will have Mr. Scharf. Mr. Scharf, please unmute.
Thank you. So I love a quote by the former mayor of Bogota, Columbia, where he said, "A developed country is not a place where the poor have cars. It's where the rich use public transit." And unfortunately, instead, in our state and area, we're creating misguided policies with an environment where the poor are displaced to areas where they must have cars and the rich have no interest in using public transit that's slow and inefficient. And our public streets are going to be packed with cars because developers are allowed to exempt themselves from providing adequate off-street parking. We really need fast mass transit from what is called the exurbs, which is areas outside Silicon Valley that have sufficient land for energy efficient housing. And the transit would go to jobs-rich areas. The California High Speed Rail is an excellent example. We'll open up the Central Valley Housing Areas for the Bay Area. One thing I did do in terms of transit, I got our Public Works Department to install super secure bike racks at the library. And unfortunately, I don't see them used very much. I use them, but most people are parking their bikes and using an insecure locking cable. We need to build fast man tri- mass transit. People are not going to use slow buses. It just, it's just a fact of life. We are going to have to go underground and do transit that people will actually use. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scharf. Our next speaker is Mr. Bono. Mr. Bono, please unmute.
Okay, here we go. All right. So in order to actually making transit or transportation more reliable, we need to have a, we have to have a connection with our neighbors because once again, transportation issues in our city is not Cupertino, is a regional issue. We need to incentivize residents to not use their car but joining a ride program. Fund and expand the transit ride, expand the biking program. Come up with new innovative ways. I mean, this is not new traffic for any cities. Look at Paris, look at Rome. They're all using e-scooters. Rome, which is five times the population, if not ten times what we have here. We need to keep upgrading and engage in electrification. We need to ensure people can start using sharing rides and give them the opportunity. But it starts with incentivizing people and make them understand that that's an important issue in our city. And how we can make it sustainable, we can continue to invest in bike lanes and create a safe environment for people to move around and trying to make sure that thanks to those policies that we can set, if elected as city council, that we're making sure that we use program to keep pushing people away from their car and joining the collective. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bono. Our next speaker will be Ms. Chow. Ms. Chow, please unmute.
Thank you for a good question. The transit solution needs to be reliable and well-connected so people can rely on them to get to their destination. We need a network of transit buses and last mile solutions. And we need commercial sites to be right next to transit stops so that we can drive up ridership through these, visited to these commercial sites with housing to be maybe two or one or two blocks away so that people walk to transit and visit those commercial sites. Cupertino has taken initiative to pilot Via Shuttle since two thousand and nineteen. And our success has earned us a grant of eight million dollars of funding to expand the program to Center Colira next year. It's a two dollar to four dollar a ride of free to for the under college students and a lot of students and seniors. This is ours. We, we hope that this program will be expanded to other cities. I think we should also discourage company buses, rather incentivize private companies to provide bus services as Taiwan has done and we have a very successful private public bus system. And the state must invest in transit. Ninety billion dollar surplus. They invested very little in transit.
Thank you, Ms. Chow. Our next speaker will be Ms. Mohan. Ms. Mohan, please unmute.
So the discussion of making transportation more reliable and sustainable can be handled at different levels and from just different perspectives. But, but primarily, it is, I would want to focus on discouraging reliance on automobiles where possible and, and work for an increased use of public transportation. This is not an, something that can be handled in relation to Cupertino alone. Bus routes have to be expanded beyond Cupertino borders. And solutions have to be arrived at after a discussion with our neighboring cities as well as the county, as well as VTA, and look at comprehensive solutions to come to resolving a problem that goes beyond the borders of Cupertino. I would encourage city-county programs like the Via Shuttles, the West Valley Community Services Ride Program, which I'm a volunteer and provides door-to-door transportation for seniors and those unable to drive. I would encourage bike lanes and pedestrian walkways. I would encourage a seamless ways of going from one transportation mode to another where possible.
Thank you, Ms. Mohan. And our last speaker for this question, Mr. Tata Chari. Mr. Tata Chari, please unmute.
It's a very good question. First and foremost, we definitely need reliable mass transit solution. And there are three characteristics which are very important. It should be affordable. It should be point-to-point. That means you should not have any gaps like last night problem, you know, things like that. The third is, it has to be carbon neutral itself. So in, in a certain way, I think what we need to do is we need to understand there's enough enough both investment in telecom as well as in the sensing so that it's possible to understand how our current mass transit is being used. What are the typical patterns of travel for people? And we have to implement a solution which actually is affordable. If it is not affordable, people are, and if it is not point-to-point, people are not going to make the culture shift. This is a dramatic change in the thinking. We need to go move towards a sharing economy. We cannot have single occupancy vehicles. But to move to sharing economy, there has to be a dramatic shift both in terms of the governmental thinking as well as the thinking of the individuals. So I think this is a, it's an investment that everybody has to buy into. And the only way you can do it is you can make that more appealing than owning a car. That's the best way I would think that people will move to is matter and transit solution, both reliable as well as it is sustainable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tata Chari. And thank you, everyone, for your answers. For our fifth question, I will be passing it on to Grace.
Hi. For the next question, I'll be asking, how would you direct Cupertino in combating the ongoing drought? You'll each have about one minute and thirty seconds, and we'll start with Mr. Fruein. Mr. Fruein, please unmute.
So I think that we need to give people serious incentives to remove their lawns and replace them with more sustainable forms of plantings, things that are native, things that are drought resistant. We need to definitely allow residents a speedy streamlined process for getting rid of things like pools. I was talking to a resident just the other day when I was out canvassing a neighborhood not too far from me who was trying to remove her pool and she was having to pay an enormous number of fees in soil sampling and so forth. And so if we really want to make it a simple and easy process to do something that we want to see happen, which is to remove these, these things that consume an enormous amount of water, then we have to actually put that into action by giving residents a cheaper and more efficient means for permitting the removal of, of something like a pool. We should be creating programs to help subsidize things like gray water reclamation, allowing us to more easily water our gardens using, you know, reclaimed water. And frankly, long term, since we know that we will be in a drought here and there for the foreseeable future, we know from extensive scholarship that multifamily, new multifamily housing is many orders of magnitude more water efficient. And we need to leverage our housing element uptake process to make sure that happens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fruein. Our next speaker will be Mr. Scharf. Mr. Scharf, please unmute.
So this is something I've had a, given a lot of thought to. I did serve on the Valley Water Advisory Committee. And this is a much harder issue than energy. You can't manufacture water easily. You can do desalinization, but it's extremely costly and uses huge amounts of energy. We've already gone a long way in getting residents to remove lawns. You know, I go around my neighborhood, there's not a lot of lawns anymore. Regarding removing pools, the lady across the street from me just removed it. And the cost was not the permit. That was a minuscule amount. The cost is that it's enormously expensive to break the shell of the pool, excavate, compact the soil and, and then fill it, you know, fill it in, especially if you want to build something back there like an ADU. And you know, the reality is, you know, I do have a pool. The reality is my water usage is very low because there's no lawn back there and there's a little bit of evaporation every month, but my water usage from my house is extremely low. But the thing we need to do is stop using potable water where it's not necessary. Apple is a prime example. They ran the purple pipe to the new campus and they're using that water for landscaping and toilet flushing. And we really need to extend that kind of thing to other areas, especially public parks where you can use that water for landscaping. We need to have impact fees on water for new construction. We don't do that. East Bay Mud does do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scharf. Our next speaker is Mr. Bono. Mr. Bono, please unmute.
In order to do that, to be honest with you, once again, is to educate the public. This is not, like I said, a Cupertino issue. It's, it's everybody issuing. So all the cities must work together with local water districts, the state, nonprofits, organization, and different agencies as well as the public to conserve water during an inevitable drought. So that involves not only good policies that creates efficiency standards and enforcement for overuse, but also we must engage the public to change the culture on water use and waste. And employ strategy like changing landscaping standards and requirements that promotes the use of native and drought resistant plants, which we do that as well in design. Cupertino and all its residents, they must recognize that we're their responsibility in this climate crisis. But once again, it's all about educations and policies that we need to set and in city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bono. Our next speaker will be Ms. Chow. Ms. Chow, please unmute.
Yeah, we are in the worst drought this year, third year in a row. And the Valley Water has established some programs to give rebates for people to re, who remove loans and pools. And then they also have required watering for only two days a week. If there's any violation, people can report to Valley Water and they will have enforcement. That said, the fact is eighty percent of the water used in California is used for farming. California continues to farm some of the most, somewhat of the, of the plants that use the most water. The state must change those policies. In the city, we did have a very successful victory garden program to help the residents change their lawn into sustainable garden, and we're expanding that program next year. And with, Valley Water has advanced the water treatment so that recycled water could become potable water. They are building a new plant in Palo Alto that hopefully will add water source. And I think we still have commercial sites that has a lot of loan that could be transformed. And we should use technology to reduce the amount of water that's used so that we can use sensor to reduce. I heard technology can reduce fifty percent of water use. And we might require construct, big construction to have own recycling plant like Tesla. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chow. Our next speaker is Ms. Mohan. Ms. Mohan, please unmute.
My primary task in combating the ongoing drought would be to work with San Jose Water and other area providers to provide education to residents, to provide education to businesses on the different ways that water can be conserved. I would advocate for enforcement of strengthening water conservation regulations whenever and wherever possible. I would, I support the use of recycled water to the extent possible. And I will encourage innovation in the field of high-quality treatment of sewage, stormwater drainage, smart water meters, replacing grass with natural, with water-resistant foliage and making every effort possible that I do in my personal life to conserve water wherever possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mohan. Our next speaker is Mr. Tata Chari. Mr. Tata Chari, please unmute.
Yeah, I think we need to understand two things. One is that this drought is not, you know, it's not going to be easy to tackle. So we have, we also need a long-term thinking in terms of deforestation and also in terms of how we, the patterns of agriculture usage that we have adopted. So that's a long-term thing. I can pass off, I can send some references so that you people can understand what we are talking about here. The, in terms of what a city itself can do, the, the city has to somehow differentiate between where we, the day water usage can be increased and where, you know, we can, we need a portable water. So that differentiation is not easy to implement, but I think that needs to be done on a very, what do you call it? It has to be put on a very aggressive basis. It has to be made to happen. And portable water is the, you know, is the usage of portable water should be, there should be a lot of conservation effort related to that. You know, it, this includes, you know, using, you know, trying to make sure that we can meter it so that it's possible for us to bring down the level of portable water usage for, for household for users which are not related to portable water. So like, you know, lawns and gardens and stuff like that. And that's pretty much it. I mean, we, we need a concerted effort. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Tata Chari. Now, our last but not least speaker for this question is Ms. Shima. Ms. Shima, please unmute.
Okay, so California, it's not just
Okay, so California, it's not just California, it's worldwide, not worldwide, but in California, we have drought. And this is because of the climate change. And this is the problem we have to tackle. And as a city of Cupertino, um, there are multiple things we can do. Um, there are things that government and state can do. The government and um state can, what they can do is something like they can add, they can make a law asking P G N E to burn less amount of oil. Um, something like that is what state can do. As our city, what we can do is, like I said, reduce the production of methane, 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 um by separating vegetable waste, wet waste, watermelon skin, banana skin, um edible waste from the rest of the regular saturated from the regular trash bin. And that will stop producing methane, which is a very potent greenhouse gas. Um, we will need to create clean energy as a city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shima, and thank you, everyone, for answering our questions. Um, now we will be transitioning to a Q and A from the community, and I will pass it off to Ria to explain more.
Hi, I'm Ria. Um, thank you, everyone, for answering our questions. Your experience and future plans are incredibly impressive. As youth, while we cannot vote quite yet, it's important for us to understand projects and plans that out that surround our city. Along with not just youth, but every single Cupertino resident, it's important and imperative that we integrate ourselves within our community. Now, we will transition into a Q and A from the public. In this specific war forum, we won't be taking live questions from attendees. Um, however, we have collected and selected specific questions from the community prior to this forum. We've taken questions from a Google form, and now we will ask them to you. Candidates, you have one minute to respond to the questions. Um, and we'll start off with Mr. Sharp, then Mr. Bono, Ms. Chow, Ms. Mohan, Mr. Tadachary, Ms. Shima, and finally, Mr. Fuin. I'll be saying the first question. The first question is, how would you lead Cupertino in further addressing the issues surrounding single-use plastic? You have one minute to respond, and we'll start off with Mr. Sharp. Mr. Sharp, please unmute.
Great, thank you. You know, single-use plastics is, you know, I always say we should try to use um encouragement and not coercion. But in terms of single-use plastics, we may need to do coercion because there is really no reason that we are still using so many single-use plastics in Cupertino and in the state. I would really love to see the state take the lead here and not have every single city in California have to pass their own ordinance. But I would very much favor a ban on single-use plastics in Cupertino. Uh, I know it's gonna affect B O B A because they use plastic cups and plastic lids and plastic straws. But I think we're smart enough and I think our residents are willing to make the sacrifice. Uh, it is often more trouble uh be washing out um things and using bamboo straws, and it could be more expensive. I think that is something that we just have to do. We can't continue the way we're going. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Our next speaker is Mr. Bono. Uh, Mr. Bono, please unmute.
There you go. So, single-use plastic is big problem, and it has only been even worse since we actually started and with this COVID, because a lot of people have been ordering a lot and but there's gonna, has to be, once again, and I will say to all this evening, it's all about education and policies that we need to set uh forth. There has to be program and incentives. For instance, there are some areas they will incentivize you by keeping one glass and and if you're reusing again, they're actually going to uh charge you for it. So I think we need to change our mindset. It's a collective effort and it needs to be addressed, but I'm definitely for a ban and it's all about education and incentivize and push businesses uh the program to ensure that we find solutions so that we don't have the single-use ban, which it will take forever to degrade for, it will take generations for them to be destroyed. So it's a problem.
Thank you, Mr. Bono. Our next speaker will be Ms. Chow. Uh, Ms. Chow, please unmute.
I have seen that single-use plastic could be reduced uh um significantly in Taiwan. It works. The government needs to push up. Okay, we adopted the single-use plastic ordinance in Cupertino. And but we are still not as uh, there are still a lot of ways people could still apply for waiver because we would like um the community to come up to speed to really require it because some people, if they couldn't get their plastic uh utensils, they might be upset customers that we don't want the business to have those customers. So education is very important. And at the same time, we need all the youth to start using, bring your own utensils to school. When you go to school, to your lunch line, encourage all your friends to use your reusable plastic. And I hope the city can make an event organizer kit so that anyone organizing event will stop using plastic utensils and tablecloth. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chow. Um, our next speaker is going to be Ms. Mohan. Ms. Mohan, please unmute.
Uh, I would lead by example. I would, in in very simple terms, I would just stop using single-use plastic uh utensils. Uh, you know, it's, it's seen, sounds like a lofty thing to say, but it is actually very uh doable. And many households, including mine, have actually put it into practice and just completely uh stopped the use of uh single-use plastic. Uh, are there alternatives? Are there options? Is it too difficult? I'd say yes, yes to all of it. It's, it's difficult, but like anything else, it needs a a new mindset. There are uh biodegradable food containers. Uh, they can, they can be uh sustainable materials used for food containers and water bottles. And it is our obligation to use these and not continue to use harmful things like plastic bottles.
Thank you, Ms. Mohan. Our next speaker is Mr. Tadachary. Uh, Mr. Tadachary, please unmute.
Yeah, I think first and foremost, uh, plastic usage has to be cut down. So I would advocate for state-level ban. I mean, if it is not a state-level ban going city by city, et cetera, it's not really helping the climate change issue. So I think that needs to happen. Uh, the other thing is that in terms of, you know, what are the other choices available? There are plastics, there's paper, uh, that if you leave out plastic as paper, you have porcelain, you have mud, you have uh, you know, uh ceramic, you have your own utensils approach. You also have the biodegradable person. So here there are two kinds of usages. One is the containers, the others, the utensils that you use, personally use utensils. So we need a mechanism by which we promote people to carry their own utensils in terms of, uh, you know, what they are using. Container-wise, which is uh a kind of something which is uh not easily avoidable, you need to go for the biodegradable uh degradable containers. So there has to be a complete change in economy, uh, you know, in terms of how the usage patterns are changing to help the climate change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tadachary. Our next speaker is Ms. Shima. Uh, Ms. Shima, please unmute.
Um, about single-use plastic cups and bottles, I think it's impossible to um like eliminate those as long as we see Coca-Cola and Pepsi, they sell like their drinks, a mountain dew in plastic bottles. That's also single-use. Um, what's important is that um we citizens uh sometimes uh don't recycle them one hundred percent. I do, but I see in landfill so many plastic bottles and plastic items in front of Target in the trash bin, regular trash bin. I see so many plastic bottles. So we just need to educate uh people. And also, uh, eventually some. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Shima. And last but not least, we have Mr. Fuin. Uh, Mr. Fuin, please unmute.
I think we start with enforcing our, you know, brand-new single-use plastic ordinance and that we pair that with an education effort for businesses and the public so that they understand its importance and are able to conform with it. Uh, we should also, in order to resolve the, the, you know, conundrum that B O B A tea shops face, partner with the chamber to help them find a solution. We have actual partners in the nonprofit sphere here. As a small city, we're we're very reliant on help from civil society in order to make things happen, and this would be a wonderful opportunity to um utilize the chamber's resources and connections. And then finally, I think that that there's been some allusion to this already. We need to partner with our state representatives in order to craft state legislation so that the example that cities like Cupertino and and others are creating can be used on a statewide basis. And so there's clarity for businesses. It will allow us to create a market for more sustainable packaging that could affect the rest of the world. I think that would be marvelous.
Thank you, Mr. Fuin. I think we can fit in one more question um from the community. So the second question for our last question for today is, how will you ensure that residents in your city have equitable access to safe and enjoy, safe and enjoyable parks and open space? You have one minute, and we will start with Mr. Bono. Mr. Bono, please unmute.
In order, can you repeat your question, please?
Yes. How will you ensure that residents in your city have equitable access to safe and enjoyable parks and open space?
Um, first of all, we need to look at our finances too. Because as if elected as city council, uh, what we're need to do is to make sure that we can buy land and turn them also into parks, and it's good for the health, it's good for our mental health. So that's very important. So once again, it goes back to leadership, negotiations, knowing what we're doing, and actually take some steps uh to make sure that we find what the resident needs and make sure that what the resident wants, it's actually set in place. So there is a lot we can do, and I think it's about outreach, uh, it's opportunities. And it's also, like I said, it's a regional thing where it would be nice to be known as uh Cupertino and as a place where we have a lot of parks, biking place and safe trails and all of the above. So uh if elected, this is what I'm gonna focus on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bono. Uh, our next speaker is Ms. Chow. Ms. Chow, please unmute.
Thank you. Um, the city is already taking step to address these issues. For example, we founded the all-inclusive playground at Jollyman Park. And we are hoping to create more sites with inclusive ground that people of different ability could enjoy. And we also address the issue of one side of Cupertino has more parkland because they are closer to the mountains. So we acquired a land in Nitty Lawrence Park that includes a, that will extend the Saratoga Trail system. And we are looking for develop that. The city also allocated the two hundred and fifty million dollars annually to to install property amenities on parks all over the city. And we are in the process of revisioning Memorial Park and so to collect inputs on how we can make a memorial park more enjoyable for our residents. So we are taking a lot of steps doing exactly what this question request. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Chow. Our next speaker is Ms. Mohan. Uh, Ms. Mohan, please unmute.
Uh, I want to make sure that parks and park amenities are are community-driven. So let's, let's make sure that the community uh is as closely uh involved in any uh uh parks that we develop uh or or parks that we uh existing parks that we need to upgrade. There are many ways we can make uh uh for access to parks equitable and safe and enjoyable. Uh, first of all, let's make sure that it is safe, that there, there is a safety provided to all uh park users, that that families and children and um who who frequent these parks had, don't, do not have to worry about security or safety. Uh, make sure that parks are open at from um morning to sunset to uh a sun sunrise to sunset. I think that's already being done. And uh, yeah, you know, I'm a big lover of park, neighborhood parks in Cupertino. And um I I think the city has done an excellent job of actually providing uh equitable access uh to.
Thank you, Ms. Mohan. Thank you. Um, so our next speaker is going to be Mr. Tadachary. Uh, Mr. Tadachary, please unmute.
Yeah, so I think the 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 thesis was essentially providing equitable access for safe and available parks and open spaces. So we have a geography where actually there are more parks and open spaces on the west side of Cupertino compared to the east side. I didn't want to bring this up, but this is a question. So I just like to emphasize that. Uh, we made some uh acquisition in terms of having the Lawrence Midi available on the east side. We don't still have the plans as to how we are going to put it, uh, make the park being, you know, friendly kind of thing. So we have an opportunity here. The other thing is that, yeah, uh, we have to look at the parks in terms of both revitalization as well as repurposing. So I think there are a lot of ideas that we can uh implement during the next, uh, you know, when the next council takes over. There's one more issue that I keep hearing is about dog-off leash areas. So every park wants a dog-off-leash area because, you know, after all, our pets are also part of our population. So that's another thing we need to look into. And of course, all-inclusive parks, very important, very, very important. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tadachary. Our next speaker is Ms. Shima. Uh, Ms. Shima, please unmute.
Okay, for safe access to the park, um, first, park has to be visible. Park has to be welcoming. So we should be able to see the sign that there is a park here and there is an entrance to the parking lot here so that we can access the park. Um, many parks in Cupertino, they don't have enough parking spaces. It's not very welcoming. Uh, I want to uh put two hundred car parking spaces in Memorial Park, of course, with solar panel, um, producing clean energy. For equitable, um, I want the sidewalk, um, pedestrian road leading to the park to be paved, um wheelchair-friendly and the bike lane, uh colored green. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shima. Uh, our next speaker is Mr. Fuin. Mr. Fuin, please unmute.
We have lots of parks in Cupertino. Um, part of the major problem with them, though, is getting to them. A lot of them are in different parts of the city. You've heard of some of that already. Um, and these different parks have different amenities in them. So in in terms of getting better, more equitable access to these parks, we need to give uh folks an easier way of getting to them. I think that means making a new bike plan, one that's focused on connecting our parks to bike trails and protected lanes so that people can more easily get to them. At a canvasser this morning, who unfortunately wasn't able to join us because she's not able to drive and her mother wasn't able to drive her to the event and didn't uh think that it would be safe enough to bike there. That that sort of lack of freedom affects a lot of people who can't drive or um would be unwilling to drive. We also need to build more restrooms in parks. Several of them don't have them. It's a relative and old form of exclusion, keeping people out of the neighborhood. And we should streamline dog-off-leash parks uh creation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fuin. And last but not least, we have uh Mr. Sharp. Mr. Sharp, please unmute.
Thank you. So when I was mayor and on city council, I voted for the acquisition of the Lawrence Midi parcel for a new park on the east side. Uh, I also voted for the funding of the all-inclusive playground at Jollyman and for the park master plan that's finally causing. and for the park master plan that's finally causing the revitalization of Memorial Park. And this is one area of parks where we actually have money to address this problem because we have developers paying park impact fees, which can only be used for parks. That money is earmarked. Uh, unfortunately, we have, do have one developer trying to get out of paying the, the park impact fees and we're working on that. Hopefully we'll have a solution. Uh, we're also looking at the possibility of acquiring some land from one of the school districts for a park on the east side, uh, instead of that parcel being sold off to a developer. And when we do upgrade playgrounds, we should include equipment to make every park all-inclusive for adults and children. I agree about dog off-leash areas and we also need secure bike parking and better bicycle access. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp, and thank you to everyone who spoke today. Um, I think we're gonna wrap up our Q and A now and we're gonna wrap up our whole forum. Um, but yeah, thank you everyone for all those insightful comments. And really quick, before we hear our closing statement, um, we're gonna take a group picture. So yeah, everyone look nice. Um, see everyone's camera. Okay, I will be taking the picture in, um, sorry. In three, two, one. Give me one second and then one more, three, two, one. Perfect, thank you. Um, and now we're gonna be hearing from Shinpei for some closing statements.
Now that the event is over, I would like to take the time to thank everyone. Thank you to everyone who took the time and attended the Cupertino Climate Candidate Forum. Thank you to young people who organized and runs the event Cupertino Youth Climate Action Team. And thank you to the candidates who took the time to run for Cupertino City Council and to speak today on your positions and stances on issues relating to climate change and the environment in Cupertino. I hope the forum better help better inform people in your decision-making process during the election process. Go up to the candidates in upcoming election and please remember to vote before November eighth. And thank you once again for attending the forum and have a wonderful night.